Good evening, everybody. Our July tenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting is now called to order. Have invocation by yours truly, and then Councilman PT is gonna lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Could we all stand for both the prayer and the pledge? Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for this opportunity, this chance to gather today, to conduct the business of this city. Pray that it's done in a way that is professional, that is well-meaning, that is done with an excellent spirit. Thank you for God in each and every department head as they lead their departments. And we pray, God, that they do it in a way that is well and even pleasing to you. Thank you for each of the council members that our thought process and decisions are guided by your presence. Our God, keep us tonight, and we do honor the scripture that we shall conduct everything decently and in order. We thank you for this day, my Lord. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in reciting the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Councilman PT. Before we get to the other items on the agenda, just want to ask everybody to take a moment to silence your cellphones during the meeting. The City Council encourages public participation. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. However, this time limit may be reduced if there are numerous speakers on a particular item. To ensure efficient proceedings, all persons addressing the City Council shall state their name and shall speak in a civil and courteous manner. Speakers shall address the agenda topic only to which they are speaking on and shall not be repetitive. Members of the audience, please respect the rights of others and do not create any, do not create noise or other disturbances as to disrupt or disturb persons who are addressing the City Council. Councilmembers who are speaking are otherwise impeded the orderly conduct of the meeting. Thank you for adhering to these instructions. All right, next item on the agenda is the reading and approval of the minutes from our June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
May I make a motion that we approve, dispense with the reading of the minutes of June twenty-sixth and that they be adopted? No corrections.
I'll say.
Motion made and seconded to adopt the minutes from our June twenty-sixth meeting as they have been recorded. Any comment at this particular time? Seeing none, Mrs. Stacy, roll cover.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. We've got five other agenda items on tonight. Each of them in some way are dealing with, well, not really each of them. Each one except Resolution number sixty-five is dealing with grants in some type of way. And the first one is read by Councilman Nielsen. It's Ordinance Number thirty-nine of two thousand twenty-three.
Do we have a hard copy up in the room?
Got one.
Thank you. Ordinance Number thirty-nine of two thousand twenty-three, and the ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Nacogdoches to award the bid for Richardson Park improvements, whereas Resolution Number forty-one of two thousand twenty-three was passed by the Nacogdoches City Council on May twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for Richardson Park improvements, bid number zero six-six-one, and whereas this bid was advertised in the Nacogdoches Times on May twenty-fifth, June first, and June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, in accordance with law, and whereas two bid proposals were received and opened us files. Bid number one was Regional Construction LLC for five hundred and three thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars, and bid number two was Martin Metal Construction LLC of Nacogdoches, six hundred and fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars, whereas awarding of this contract is contingent upon the approval of the Office of Louisiana Community Development, and whereas on July fifth, two thousand twenty-three, the appointed committee of Clarissa Smith, Finance Director, Ed Lee, Director of Purchasing, Kevin Warner, Recreation Director, and Christopher, PT, Councilman, reviewed the bid proposals for bids for Richardson Park improvements, and whereas the above-appointed committee members unanimously recommended the city award the bid to the lowest bidder, Regional Construction LLC, in the amount of five hundred and three thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And is this introduction?
Right.
Okay.
Just introduction. So, just to remind us, I don't know if Councilman may be in there. This is associated to the Love Louisiana Outdoors grant, I think, is, did you say? So, we did, city did receive four hundred thou-, well, we're gonna receive, gonna receive four hundred thousand dollars to improve this park. It's on Lake Street. Some may say behind Steins. That may be a better reference point for you. So, and there's a picture that shows you largely a baseball field. There's a, there's a pavilion that's not shown in the picture. There's also a playground set, and there's some restrooms as well. But gonna, the renovations will allow us to put in a walking track, remodel restrooms, the inclusive place at, first inclusive place at, in the city. Councilman PT, any, any other renovations I'm missing?
The basketball court, but I think that's gonna come later.
Okay. Yeah, that's right. Yeah, basketball courts will, that'll be paid for on the city's dime. All right? So, don't know if they're, now, now typically what we have, this is for introduction, so you could ask public questions on a public meeting later on, but certainly after the meeting if you wanna ask me a question about it. But Council, do you have any comments or questions about this?
Just think it's a great improvement to this park, and it's gonna service a lot of young, young people and families.
Right.
So, glad to be able to do it.
I'm really happy to see that as inclusive play, and I hope to eventually, if anything else in the city has expanded, I hope all parks end up having that.
Yep, definitely want, that's, that's a part of the plan. We definitely want to do that. Kevin, you got something?
Well, some additional things that were, you didn't mention were the, the lighting is all gonna be, some nice lighting all the way around the track, new barbecue pits, the pavilion's gonna be improved, it's just aesthetically, it's gonna be, have a facelift. The parking lot's gonna be reworked over there by the fence row, and a lot of things, you know, other things are part of the package.
Thanks for mentioning that, Kevin. Right? And again, this is just introduction, four hundred thousand dollars paid for, and we found other ways to close that gap, because it's a five hundred and three thousand dollar bid that we received, so. And Ms. Aina, stick around. I'll answer whatever question you have, okay? This will be on our next agenda item, our next meeting. All right, moving on to five resolutions that we have today. The first one is read by Councilman PT.
Thank you, Mayor. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number two for the purchase of a forty-seven-inch sheave height digger truck for the utility department, whereas the city of Nacogdoches awarded the bid to Long Star Truck Group on September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, by ordinance number zero four five of two thousand and twenty-one, in the amount of two hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and two dollars for a forty-seven-inch sheave height digger truck for the utility department. Whereas on May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, the City Council approved change order number one in the amount of seventeen thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars, making the revised contract total two hundred and fifty-two thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars. Whereas on June twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, Long Star Truck Group issued an invoice herein after, referred to as change order number two, and whereas the contract sum will be increased by this change order number two in the amount of twenty-one thousand three hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-seven cents, and the revised contract total would be two hundred seventy-three thousand six hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. I so move that we adopt Resolution Number zero six-five.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded. This is a change order. Obviously, we don't like to see change orders that have an increase in the cost, and unfortunately, that's the way some things are going now as we talk to those of you, I was able to talk to council members about this. So, if we don't move now, we won't be able to get in line until two thousand twenty-five, and we won't be able to get that. Matt, is that the correct truck? We, we try to, I don't know if that's.
That's close, yeah.
It is close enough? All right. But we won't be able to get it until two thousand twenty-seven, so we're, we'll be four years away from, four years before we're able to purchase this vehicle if we don't go ahead and improve this tonight, so. I don't know if you got any comment?
They've stayed going up, so, you know, if we don't do it now, we're gonna probably be faced with another increase in future years.
Yeah, the likelihood of it's going down is, uh.
Slam.
Yeah, right, so probably impossible. Any other comment? Okay, all right. Seeing none. Mrs. Stacy, roll cover.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next item is read by Councilwoman Alora Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution Number zero six-six of two thousand and twenty-three. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a certificate of substantial completion to the contract between the city of Nacogdoches and Williams Equipment Services LLC for two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two street rehabilitation program phase one. Whereas the city of Nacogdoches has contracted with, with Williams Equipment Services LLC for two thousand twenty-one through, through two thousand and twenty-two street rehabilitation program phase one. Whereas this work has been completed, and whereas a substantial completion inspection has been performed by the engineer and representative, bring it down, and representative of the city of Nacogdoches, and they find the project to be complete. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nacogdoches in legal session convened at the Honorable Ronnie Williams Jr., Mayor B., and is hereby authorized, empowered, and directed to execute the reference certificate of substantial completion for Williams Equipment Services LLC. And I move to adopt a bid of Resolution Number zero six-six.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to approve this resolution. As it states in the first line of the resolution, the substantial completion that we're asking for is to officially close the books, as you say, on street rehabilitation program phase one of two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. All right? So, it's those streets, Breed Avenue, St. Clair, Sata Street, Mayfield, Swanee, portion of Amulab, and then a little portion of Peninsula. So, these are the areas we're talking about. And Nick initially talked about, I think, I just can't remember, but I think maybe the first, first mentioned this in May, but there were a couple of things that needed to get done before we got to that point. Mainly dealing with residential, and there's some other kind of drainage work that needed to get done first, so. So now we're able to finally put this before you, so. If there's any comment at this time, we'll take it. The project is complete, so. All right, seeing none. Mrs. Stacy, roll cover.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is read by Councilwoman Washington. Eli, Resolution sixty-six, zero six-seven of two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number zero six-seven of two thousand and twenty-three, the LC DBG Clearance Grant Program Administration Assessment. Resolution authorized the administration assessment of the proposed application assist, assistance for the grant submitted for funding to the LC DBG Grants Clearance Program. And I move to adopt Resolution Number zero six-seven. I'll let Randy LaCase explain a little bit more.
Well, before, if he has something, do we have a second on that?
A second.
Second. Motion made and seconded before, if Randy has a comment. I mentioned earlier that the majority of our pieces tonight deal with grants. Of course, that first one, as we say, was the Love Louisiana Outdoors grant, and then Resolution sixty-six. It was a grant, the reason I brought that one up is because it's not a grant that you apply for. Every city, village, town throughout Louisiana, throughout the country, county, parish government, received, based on the formula, some dollars. So that's, we didn't have to apply for that. We call it the American Rescue Plan, or ARPA for short. So we use ARPA to complete that project, about one point five million, so. It shows up on the books as a grant, even though it's not something we, you know, compete for. Now, these next two pieces, Resolution sixty-seven and sixty-eight, deal with a grant we're about to apply for through the Louisiana Community Development Block Grant Program. And this is a ve-, this is a new program, is dealing with, they call it the clearance program, and it's to clear dilapidated properties that, you know, structurally cannot be rehabbed, and the likelihood of that happening is, like we said early on, different matter slim to none. So they're dealing with two different aspects, administrative aspects, and this is all about getting points. So both of these about, if we're able to do them in-house, we get more points, and that just puts us in a better position to win the funds, so that's really what it's about. Randy, I don't know if there's anything additionally you wanted to add to that.
I haven't directly been handling that. I think Chantrelle may have been more involved.
Correct.
But there's no question it's for rehabbing of dilapidated substandard structures, and that falls under the plan zoning.
Right. That's right. Look, the councilwoman had mentioned yourself. Chantrelle, is there anything other than what we stated?
No, I think with what we have so far on our books, we're gonna apply up to a little over five hundred thousand on this grant. So, if we can get that, if we can use it and clean up the rest of the items that we didn't take care of with ARPA.
Yep. These two pieces just allows to do it. Any comment about this first one that's connected to the clearance grant program, the Louisiana Clearance Program?
Not really a comment, but I just wanna make a statement. When we're reading these resolutions, they need to be read in full entitlement, not just part of the title. They need to be read in full. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. Alex, do you wanna, or maybe some later about that? I don't know.
With the resolution?
Yeah, I think Councilwoman Alora said we need to read them in full. I don't know if you got a different thought or something you wanna handle after the meeting?
Not just in the title.
I mean, I think the majority of the legislation is actually placed in the newspaper for public to see it, so I think it's almost optional.
But people watching this, and they need to hear what we're doing and what's going on, so that's my, my take on that. You, we need to be transparent to the public, you know. That's all I'm saying, as to what we're doing and what's being done.
I think we discussed.
Everybody's not reading the newspaper. A lot of people reading this, listening to this online, and that's all I'm saying.
I would say, Ryan, legally, it's been, we've covered, but it's, but the council is optional. Y'all believe, y'all wanna, you know, read the entire thing, and that's a pattern that's been taking place, you can't. But if you're asking me legally, I say I think we cover it and when we publicize.
Okay.
It's up to y'all.
All right. And I'll certainly counsel talk to you more about the point that Councilwoman Alora Smith raised. This piece, again, is just about the city, this first Resolution sixty-seven, doing our own administrative, administering the grant. Yeah, that we have the employees with expensive, extensive background knowledge to administer the grant, is what this is about. All right? Okay. Mrs. Stacy, roll cover.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next item is Resolution sixty-eight, read by Councilman Harrington.
This is Resolution sixty-eight of two thousand twenty-three. A resolution addressing legal aspects of the proposed application assistance for grants submitted for funding to the Louisiana CDBG Clearance Grant Program, whereas the city of Nacogdoches is desirous of submitting an application to the Louisiana CDBG Clearance Grant Program, and the purpose of the application is to seek grant funding for the clearance of blighted properties throughout the city of Nacogdoches, and whereas it is necessary to acknowledge that employees of the city of Nacogdoches will pay for any associated legal fees to receive two bonus points should funding become available, and whereas the city of Nacogdoches legal staff has extensive experience with the Louisiana Community Development Block Grant Program. I move to adopt Resolution sixty-eight of two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt this resolution, again, related to the Louisiana CDBG Clearance Grant Program. It's dealing specifically with the, the legal aspects that we have the legal staff, if something happens to arise, where we would need to use it during this process. Any comment about, about this particular item?
Yeah, I do. So basically, we're gonna paraphrase it. Instead of reading the whole thing, we're gonna paraphrase it through the ordinance, because it wasn't read as Councilwoman Alora stated, so we're gonna paraphrase. We can move along.
Any other comment about the particular item, y'all?
I think it's great that we have these funds available for this, for the blighted properties. It's gonna help a lot.
All right. All right, Mrs. Stacy, roll cover.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries as well. The final item on the agenda is read by Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number sixty-nine of two thousand twenty-three.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Yeah, I'm sorry, Councilman Nielsen. Let me back.
Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
Yeah, let me back that up a little bit. I need to ask to amend the agenda to add Resolution Number zero six-nine to two thousand twenty-three.
Mayor, make a motion that we amend the agenda to add Resolution Number zero six-nine to two thousand, two thousand twenty-three to the agenda.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. And what happened? It's just a timing thing. No, no problem. It's just that we put out the RFPs, as we're gonna see in the legislation, we received four, but we had the meeting, the agenda items were gonna go out, and so we said, hey, instead of waiting another two weeks, let's go ahead and, if we come to a decision of the four, and we did, we'll go ahead and amend the agenda to get it on, so we can go ahead and get them to start, start working, so. That's what it was about. Didn't know if anybody just wanted to know. Any, any comment about this particular motion? All right, seeing none. Mrs. Stacy, roll cover.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. All right, now, Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number sixty-nine of two thousand twenty-three, a resolution approving selection of the firm of Volkurt Incorporated, and authorization for mayor to execute a contract with this firm for development of the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan for the Safe Streets for All Federal Grant Program, whereas the city of Nacogdoches was recently granted two hundred and eighty thousand by the U.S. Department of Transportation for development of a Comprehensive Safety Action Plan under the Safe Streets for All Program, and whereas the city of Nacogdoches has committed to providing the required twenty percent local matching funds for this project in the amount of seventy thousand, and whereas the city of Nacogdoches has recently executed the project agreement with the U.S. Department of Transportation through the Federal Highway Administration, and whereas on June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, the city of Nacogdoches advertised and distributed a request for proposals for consultant services for development of the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan, and whereas on July fifth, two thousand twenty-three, the city of Nacogdoches received four submittals, and whereas upon review and evaluation of the proposals received, the proposal review team, consisting of the mayor, finance director, purchasing director, grants manager, and city engineers, recommended selection of the firm of Volkurt Incorporated to perform these services, and whereas Volkurt Incorporated has proposed a lump sum fixed fee that fits within the established project budget of three hundred and fifty thousand, and that includes federal funds plus local match. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Nacogdoches City Council in regular session held on July tenth, two thousand twenty-three, does approve the selection of Volkurt to perform these services, be it further resolved that the Nacogdoches City Council hereby authorizes Mayor Ronnie Williams Jr. to execute a contract with Volkurt Incorporated for these services, and I move that we adopt Resolution Number sixty-nine of two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Okay. All right, motion has been made and seconded, all right? And it basically explains everything that we've done. We've got, we have four firms, as Councilman Nielsen read, and really, the folks we had in the room, two of them are here today, two are not, but I think everybody felt that any one of the firms could have done the work for us, could have done a good job. So it was a, it was a problem, but a good problem to have, so. And Volkurt, you kinda do your little rating system or whatnot, but ultimately decided to go with Volkurt. They're gonna partner with a local, local firm, which is, I think, you know, certainly a plus, and think that they're gonna be able to do a really good job for us. So again, this is tied to the Safe Streets for All Grant. There were eleven cities, I think you remember, earlier this year that won that grant, so we were one of the eleven. It is incumbent upon us, we wanna, want the firm to do a good job, but we wanna also move as expeditiously as possible so that we could apply for implementation dollars, the third round, which we think is gonna be available at the beginning, the start of summer twenty twenty-four. So go ahead and get the plan done, and we put them on the timeline to get it done, and I, then we could apply for some larger dollars, could be five million, eight million, depending on what the plan says and what our needs are here. But I do know if you look at some of the Safe Streets implementation winners, you see some twenty million, fifteen million. Yeah, it just depends on the size of the project, right? So, we do have the seventy thousand budgeted, so everything, I think, is going really well with this particular grant. Any additional comments here? Okay. All right, seeing none. Mrs. Stacy, roll cover.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Mm-hmm. All righty. Look, we always encourage you to download Go Nacogdoches and regroup. Thankfully, we hadn't had to use regroup here of late, but it's there in case we need it. Our next city council meeting is gonna be on the twenty-fourth in just two weeks. A few other announcements. Farmers Market is still going. We have one coming up this Saturday, typical time from eight to twelve, typical location on the Riverbank. Saturday, typical time from eight to twelve, typical location on the Riverbank, no place like it. All right, I think the next one is about the Farmers Market as well, on the twenty-second, same time, so we're encouraging people to come out on Saturdays to the Farmers Market. Folk Festival is July twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, so that's just coming up in less than two weeks, not this Saturday, but the next, so I think there are a lot of people who attend, this is the forty-third annual, it's pretty much a big deal for the campus and the surrounding areas. I think I read somewhere where they're bringing that gumbo competition back, somebody may know about that, I hear it's a popular event for them, so that'll be coming back, make sure you get your tickets in the tent. We are fortunate, I've mentioned this before, to have some major attributes, when you think of the university and LSU, MSA, and, but another thing is to have the Louisiana Sports Hall of Fame induction here every year. We bring, we're able to bring stars who are connected to Louisiana, whether they're born here, or they play for one of Louisiana teams, here to the city of Natchitoches, that's not Baton Rouge, it's not New Orleans, it's right here in our city, and there are some free events that we really want to encourage people to go to, the welcome reception is a free event, it's held at the Louisiana Sports Hall of Fame Building, July twenty-seventh, at five P.M., you have most of your athletes to come in at the welcome reception. This year, Elena Beard, I think y'all heard of her, I think she played for Southwood, and related to one of our local attorney, right? Is she related to Conde? I think she's related to Conde, so she'll be here, that's, that's pretty big. Paul Bird will be here, baseball, like with the Tigers, Wendell Davis, Matt Forte, I think I remember him, Paul, how you say his name, Maneri? How you say his name? Paul Maneri, LSU Tigers, baseball, baseball coach?
Maneri.
Maneri? And I, I mean, you know, I mean, we respect all of them, but let's not kid ourselves, the biggest name this year is Eli Manning, so Eli Manning is gonna be here in Natchitoches. We inducted his brother a few years ago, I wasn't married then, but he was inducted a few years ago, so it's just, it's a big deal. It's a big deal that that is here in Natchitoches, so we really want, and again, these are free events, so the welcome reception, we're gonna put that out there, they have a junior training camp out there, they've got the Rockin' River Fest on that Friday, and again, free event, they have a band, they have fireworks, you'll see all of the inductees on the stage, you get to see them, so let's make a plan to, to come and support at least those free events, and then if you, you know, there are tickets that'd be sold for the other events, but certainly want to come to those free events, and we need to do it. All right, so you'll be seeing something from us, and hopefully other entities in Natchitoches supporting the Louisiana Hall of Fame, we're so blessed. Is there something, I thought there was another thing, no? Okay. All right, council, anything else? Nothing else, we're here, motion to adjourn.
I so move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, y'all have a good day, folks.